All right, we'll call our council meeting to order at 6:07 PM. The town of Coopers is located in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. We'll move into the adoption of the agenda. Is there any objection to the agenda? No? All right, and then let's look at our previous minutes. So we have the minutes from May 7th, our regular council meeting. Any objections to minutes? How about the May 14th committee of the whole meeting minutes? All good? And the May 16th intergovernmental committee meeting minutes? Great. So we'll move on now to the staff reports. We have one that has been submitted by a director of community development, and maybe I'll just pass it over to you, and then we'll go to council, see those questions.
Certainly. Thank you so much, Mayor Montina. So this memo is just to let council know about a very slight change that we're making with one of our communication channels specifically for emergency alerts. So when we're talking about an emergency, we're talking about a wide-scale event that is likely going to lead to potential evacuation or a shelter in place or something like that, where we have a very specific point in time that we need to get information out to our residents, our businesspeople, any visitors in the area for life safety. And so in the past, the town had used a piece of software called Code Red, but since then, the province has actually just centralized that service into Alberta Emergency Alerts, which many people are very familiar with over the last few years. And as I have come into the organization and looked around at what our neighbors are doing and what's commonplace here in Alberta, I've learned that AEA is the platform of preference, especially for the province and our neighboring municipalities. And so we have just decided to make the change away from Code Red and use AEA instead. Some of the benefits, and really kind of the most significant one from my professional experience, is having a central location for members of the public to find point-in-time information for life safety. We had an experience in my former position in B.C. where we had a massive wildfire, and we had residents from 26 different communities come into our community as evacuees. And the number-one concern that was raised is that they had to look in 26 different places to find information that was relevant to that event. And so being able to have one centralized location for this information can be critical. So that's why, one of the major reasons why we decided to make the change. Also, there is a cost savings to a degree, because we're able to move the funds that are used for Code Red to a different operational line where we need it for the newly-formed regional emergency program.
Great, thank you. Council questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So with the previous system, you mentioned it was an opt-in system, right? And this system is not, I guess?
So there's actually two ways. So if we have an event where we're trying to make people aware of something, but there's not an immediate need to evacuate or an immediate need to shelter in place, then they would need to opt-in in order to receive those notifications. And it's the same way right across the province. But if we had a situation where we needed an immediate evacuation or we needed any type of action right now, then we would be able to use cellular technology. And so it would be broadcast to anybody with a cellular-compatible device within a specific geographical area. So that's part of the public education piece that we're going to have to do, is just making sure that our residents are aware, this is the platform that we're using, and here's how they can receive the notifications. It is customizable, and so residents can decide whether or not they want to be receiving different types of notifications, how they receive that, if it pops up as an icon on the app itself, and then they look at it when they want, or it comes through as a push notification and that sort of thing. It's the same with any of these apps that you would see. But if there is something, any immediate action, we can, you do what's called Broadcast Intrusive, and so that uses cellular technology.
Great. So this is an actual app that people have to download?
So yeah, so they can use the app, they can look at the website, they can follow Alberta Emergency Alert on social media. And that would be the same for any of these mass notification systems. They can still follow our Facebook page and our website, but this is the system that is centralized across the province, that they can receive alerts from anywhere. But they would need, the primary use that you'll find is people will download the app and use that to be notified.
So otherwise, if somebody didn't have the app notified, it would be a text message-like type of thing?
No, it would have to go through, let me see. That's, no, you are correct. So if it's Broadcast Intrusive, it sends it as a notification through the app, it sends it as a text message, it will go over radio and television. So that's where you get that, that's that intrusive piece, where it breaks into the programming, and you would hear the emergency notification there.
Okay, great, thank you.
So it's the same as when you get those, like, the weather alerts, if there's a tornado, I mean, Environment Canada's got something out. If the RCMP sends out an alert, that's that same system, whether you're opted in or not.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have so much of a question, just a comment. I'm just happy to see it's kind of standardizing with what other people are doing. And even without the cost savings, I think that this is good, that everyone can get the information they need in a timely manner. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely. Great, thank you for that information. All right, so we'll move right into our first bylaw that we have today, which is the mill rate bylaw. So first of all, what I'm going to do, and I'll just call this over to our C.A.O. And, yeah.
So, so you do have a... I'll get my RFD here, there we go. So, actually, Tolu and Mike put this together, so I didn't even have a chance to review it. It comes so late on Friday, so Tolu's probably more familiar with this than I am. But essentially, this is your standard mill rate bylaw we're required to pass in advance of sending out our tax notices. One of the challenges we had was that the county only approved their mill rate on Thursday, which meant that we had to wait till Friday to be able to calculate our mill rate bylaw to account for those added properties, which are still under tax agreement with us, but under the mill rates that are set forward by the county. So this is very fresh off the mill, and this represents actually a 3.04% reduction in our mill rate for 2024. Essentially, we had an increase of just over $100,000 in proposed expenditures, almost all of it, which was denoted towards the increase in our RCMP contract costs. Our actual expenditures related to municipal operations actually went down like 0.06%. So you'll see a mill rate, a proposed mill rate of 7.2673, which is a reduction from last year's mill rate, which was just under 7.5. I will also say we had approximately 8% increase in our assessment, which we did not utilize all of, and we are turning some of that back to say we didn't require all of that assessment increase under the existing mill rate, so we were able to lower the residential mill rate. A very minor increase to the non-residential mill rate, which is holding our mill rates both under 10 for municipal purpose, 9.68 for non-residential, 7.2673 for residential. And of course, Tolu and Mike have provided some context around it in terms of what that looks like for municipal operations and our provincial education requisition, along with our Green Acres Foundation and our Dipper designated industrial property mill rates. So I will make a note that for the 2025 tax year, we will be sending out forms so that our folks can declare whether they're a separate school or public. It's something we haven't done, so this was new. And Mike and I had this conversation with Municipal Affairs a few weeks back. So that will be a change for next year, but not this year. So I'm sure of that, I'm happy to answer any questions. They've also provided you with a 10-year assessment, taxation, and mill rate comparison. And you will see that while our assessment has certainly increased, our taxable assessment went up by 8%, our taxation changes 4.84, but with the assessment increase, again, we're able to lower that mill rate by 3.04%. Happy to answer any questions outside of that.
Great, thank you. Questions from council? If there's none, would somebody like to make a motion to give first reading?
Sure. Okay. I move that council give first reading to bylaw number 452-24, the 2024 mill rate bylaw.
Excellent. Is there any discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, that's carried. Would somebody like to give second reading?
Yes, I move that council give second reading to bylaw 452-24, the 2024 mill rate bylaw.
Any discussion? So question, all those in favor, that's carried. And I'll move, let everybody, let them get caught up there.
(laughing) Tolu's typing away. I might add that with our operating expenses and proposed capital for this year, that would bring our total budget expenditures to $10.54 million.
Thank you.
These are all our interns, right?
I know, she's doing great. So I'll move that council place bylaw number 452-24, the 2024 mill rate bylaw for third reading. Call question, all those in favor, that's carried.
Unanimously.
Unanimously.
And it must be noted unanimously, Tolu as well.
And would anybody like to give third reading?
Sure. I move that council give third reading to bylaw 452-24, the 2024 mill rate bylaw.
Great, any discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, that's carried. All right.
Easy, Alex.
Oh, great.
Do want to thank Mike and Tolu for their work on that. And it's unfortunate, Mike's first day not here, we passed the tax.
That's true.
It's easy to pass, though.
Yeah. All right, so we'll move into our next bylaw here. So this is the council committee's bylaw. Again, I'm going to turn this over to administration, and then to council for questions.
I will have Ms. Hanning to lead the charge on this particular piece.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mayor Montina. So this is a recommendation to council to make just a very slight adjustment. What we're trying to do is use just a different approach when it comes to major events and community celebrations. It's more of a legislative change rather than a functional change for what we'd like to do. But what we're recommending is to remove the community celebration committee from the council committee's bylaw. And instead of having it established as a committee, turn it into a working group. There's a number of reasons for it. One of the big things that we've been experiencing is it's been really difficult to get quorum at our meetings. And so we've now had two months back-to-back where we haven't been able to achieve quorum for the committees. And so we haven't been able to formalize any decision-making. And so in order to be able to move forward events like Canada Day and Miners' Days, we need to start, we're about five weeks away from our first major event, and so we need to get some things going and get some things in place. So by transitioning it into a working group, we still have all the same people at the table, very much involved in the same way. We're still making sure that we're appropriately engaging the community groups and individual residents who want to be volunteers in this group, and making sure that they have a voice at the table and can give really great input. But we're just removing some of those legislative barriers, like having to have formal votes and that sort of thing. This will allow us to, like I said, move things forward a little bit easier. We do still need to have a structure when it comes to decision-making. And so what the policy recommends is that the final decision does rest with administration, but that will always be with the input of community members. We wouldn't be telling groups what to do or how to do the functions that they're part of. We'd be looking for them to help lead that. But when we do need to make a final decision, then administration would be doing that. We have framed the policy as both a council policy as well as administration. Of course, council is more than welcome and encouraged to attend those working group meetings. It wouldn't just be one individual who would be able to attend, it would be any member of council. We would still have the same schedule for our meetings for the working group, so at least once a month more if needed, and we'll be able to put on some great events for the community.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I have a question about the membership. I guess, how are we handling the membership if it's open to the public? And is there, I guess, we wouldn't be approving members then, right? Or does it mean as part of the committee? That would be just up to administration then, is that correct?
I don't know that we've had that conversation, but if had an individual member of the community wanted to be a volunteer, we do have just one volunteer member as a volunteer resident that's been newly-appointed to the committee. But I know that that individual also represents one of our local organizations, so we could certainly invite them. We could continue the process of inviting organizations or representatives up. But I think we could also have a process in place. And because it's a policy, it doesn't need to come back to council if we add some of those things that we find, okay, we need to kind of bulk this up a little bit to make sure that we can invite people and what that might look like to have individuals from the community come in. So it's certainly something we can look at to add.
That would be part of the policy. We have two issues here. One is the removal of the committee from the committee's bylaw, and the other is the policy to essentially support the committee. But we may want to define that maybe a little bit.
Yeah, we don't have anything in there right now to identify how a member of the public on their own would become part of the working group. So we would have to define that for sure.
Any other questions? All right, would anyone like to give first reading?
Sure. I move that council give first reading to bylaw number 453-24, council committee's bylaw.
Any discussion? Call question, all those in favor, that's carried. And then from there, we will move on to the community celebration policy. And we'll go, same idea? Is there anything you want to add, or no? Okay. All right, would anybody like to take motion on this?
If we, I guess if we wanted to have some sort of direction on the membership or how we're handling that, I'm just wondering if administration would like to move this for now and have that come back again? As perhaps a process?
Because there's only one reading on policy, right? So if they approve it, it's approved. But there's a requirement to define the membership, which could be as simple as hoisting it from the previous terms of reference. Our local organizations would be encouraged to send a member to represent their interest of the committee.
And then would council like an application process for individuals who may want to be part of the working group? Would council want to be able to appoint people to the working group as individuals?
Sure. Me personally, I don't see a concern with it, I guess, just, you know, I don't see council as being, needing to be the ones to approve and appoint them. Yeah, I just would like to see, I think, kind of what the C.A.O. was saying about some guidance about, you know, whether community groups participate, we'll invite them and encourage them to act as a president. And then my other thought was, well, if you had a bunch of public members who wanted to join just as volunteers, yeah, that's fine too. But, you know, if they are, want to run things a certain way, and, you know, there's some disagreement, I guess, in there, that's the management that administration would have to do to try and work that out, right? So I'm just trying to help that a little bit smoother, I guess, let's say, in terms of, you know, well, there's no guidelines, well, who can be in here, right? So, you know, maybe some process that has to go through administration, maybe? Like, I don't think it needs to come to me. But if maybe administration, it would be useful for administration to have that included in there, then I'm in favor of that. But yeah, I'm kind of open to some just suggestions, really. I just, I just thought, it's not really talked about at all. So how do you become a member of the working group?
What we have found is some organizations have been sending a different member as well, right? There's not been, not all groups have appointed a member. So one night it might be this person, the head of it, and that's it, it might be a different person. And we left that open, as best we can determine for our friends, right? It was just the representative of community organizations we're invited to participate. We're invited to send a member. So we could maybe structure it with similar wording. It would be how we want to manage the public outside of those organizational groups.
Yes, and I think that's where the council is going with it, is the individual community members that may want to be part of it, and how do we engage them, and what does that look like in getting them involved with the working group? Absolutely, we can, we can add something in there in regards to membership and, I guess, parameters about if you're signing up to be part of the working group, here are kind of the expectations as well, to make sure that, you know, we don't set people up to feel like we failed in any way because we don't have established expectations. So we could absolutely add a section to the policy for that and bring it back to council. The one question I would have is, we need to have another meeting before our June meeting, which is the third week of June, because that is right before Canada Day. And so we're looking to have that meeting this coming Monday. So I guess I would be looking, is it okay to have that meeting and let the group know that we're transitioning to a working group in the absence of having a policy in place? Or would council like to have a policy in place tonight, and then we bring it back for amendment? Because that would be a simple amendment later.
I find it, council's only given first reading to the committee's bylaw, which means in formal structure, your celebration committee is still in place as per that bylaw, which would allow you to continue on how you're eating. We could bring this back for the next council meeting to give second and third reading to the bylaw change and to approve the policy as amended. That works for, that works for Ms. Hanning?
Yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead.
I guess, just a couple of questions with this. If we still have it as the council committee, if you don't get quorum, then can you technically have a meeting? And then my other thought is, would it make more sense for us to approve the policy as written right now, but ask for amendments to include the membership details we brought back to another council meeting, so we can get working that way? And if that is the case, did we want to give a second and third reading to the amended council committee's bylaw?
That's also viable, I would think.
Because my personal thoughts are, I would be all right with the policy in place right now so that we can hit that event, because it's only five weeks out. And then, you know, if they want to, if we can get those changes brought back, we can refine the policy as needed. And then we can spend some time to make sure everything kind of jives with what we're looking at. Because right now, it's going to be the same essential committee that's going to be doing the work for this one, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that it makes sense to do second and third reading with the committee's bylaw, and then to approve the policy, and then to request amendments for later on, so we can keep things moving. So why don't we do that, if anyone is open to that?
It makes sense, right? I mean, it does.
It would be very helpful.
Yeah, it's a simple change, and community groups are encouraged to participate in the working group, like, so there's wording there to at least give it a foundation.
Yeah. Okay, would anyone, let's jump back up to 10.2 then, if everyone's okay with that, to finish off that bylaw there. Would anyone like to give second reading?
Yes, I'll move that council give second reading to bylaw 453-24, the council committee's bylaw.
Excellent. Any discussion yet? Call the question, all those in favor, that's carried. We'll just give them a minute here to get all that together.
We will need, you know, consent.
Yeah.
We'll have to, the other bylaw, if you want. And we need to copy this one.
And I can make that motion again, so you don't even have to change my name. Just have to change, change the bylaw. I'm so generous.
Very much, you know, working hard for our community.
(laughing) Hi, Ed. So with that, so I made the motion to place bylaw number 453-24, just want to make sure that's the right one, yeah. No.
453-24, council committee's bylaw.
453-24, the council committee's bylaw for third reading. Call the question, all those in favor, carried unanimously. We'll give one more second. Yep. And then would anybody like to make motion for third reading?
Sure, I can do that. I move that council give third reading to bylaw number 453-24, the council committee's bylaw.
Any discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, that's carried. All right, now let's move down to the community celebration policy. Anyone want to make this motion?
Sure, I will. But I would like, I can change it slightly, I think, to add the note about the membership revisions.
So notify, consider, and treat.
So I would like to move, I move that council approve policy, see 10 community celebrations with, and further ask that administration return or provide guidelines, yeah, for membership, and add following, or...
Bring it back to the, you can cancel.
Yeah. (laughing) I'd bring, and...
Got you.
(laughing)
Move that council, hold your spot, so we can get it together.
We can, we can bring that too.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, where's it go? Where do things want to go?
Whoa, stop that.
Why is there?
Stop, oh, no.
We don't...
Touch screen.
Oh, it's that one, it's that keyboard.
What about the keyboard?
The keyboard does weird things. Carlene said that.
Stop, there should be an M键.
We need a new keyboard. Because this happened for another day, too.
You should have clicked the drop-down on the end, dude. On the M键, there's a little arrow.
Oh.
There you go.
And just keep going.
Just keep going over to the bottom.
We'll fix this later.
I think you should be close. Keep going, yeah, almost there.
Oh, I see what it did.
Just scroll, keep scrolling down to the bottom, the end, you know?
Oh, just let there, it's crazy.
That was crazy. So, no, no.
Yeah, just keep going.
I tried to scroll right on the right, and then just go all the way down to the bottom.
Yeah.
How far do you want to go, though? How far do you want to go though?
Just all the way.
All the way.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, yes.
Oh. I don't think so, because like, that's some of the other stuff that they've done in the minutes.
Well, that's true too.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Oh, that's right, we didn't do 24 in a two bar.
Look at everything we've learned tonight.
No, it's great.
That's this word.
Oh, well, it's all there, so this is okay.
It's not, we have video.
Okay, could you get, yeah, there you go.
Oh, yes, this is why the backspace is stuck. That's why. All good.
Yeah.
I'm done by a steady key.
Yeah.
To council, at the June 4th, are you going to read?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to read your motion to make sure you like it?
Uh, yes, I move that council approve policy C10 community celebrations and further ask that administration buy credits for membership and bring back this to council at June 4th committee meeting.
All right, since you co-created this, I'm not sure if I need to ask those questions or just do it. Would you like to speak to this though? Okay. Would anyone else? Okay. So council boarders made this motion, I'll call the question, all those in favor? That's carried. All right.
It's not even how bearin' feels.
Yeah. It's true. Okay, so we'll move into committee reports. So we do have the main community housing advisory committee meeting minutes with an RFD. Remind me, who is, council boarder, you're on this one, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, did you want to kind of say anything about the RFD before we ask for any questions?
Yeah, sure. So our main intention, we have had, we have, of course, in the RFD some background information there, which of course, for the, for the main thing that I want to highlight is that we have different lot coverage percentages throughout our land use bylaw from 45 all the way to 80% for different uses, with some being as required by the development authority, of course, as well. So there's really a wide breadth. And we often will discuss in council how lot coverage affects our stormwater, and of course, parking is involved as well, because you're getting a hard surface which affects stormwater as well. So I think stormwater is a very important thing in our community to manage correctly. And it's written throughout our documents. And what this inquiry, I guess, is based around is that we want to have some kind of high level information or summary about what are the requirements for our town? What were the assumptions that were used as we, as they engineered each area structure plan, if there were any? Or, you know, developing our stormwater master plan, for example? So, and how does that affect lot coverage really? So we know that, you know, it might be, it might, in working to develop this with the administration, I mean, it might be an easy answer, it might be a hard answer, but we really, I think, in order to help guide development properly, we should have a good understanding of where we're at. So that's really the intent with this RFD, is that we wanted to understand that. And the reason, and the knock on reason to that is that it will help guide development as we work towards different types of housing that could potentially come within our community, right? So as noted in the large lot residential, it says, as a part of the development. Well, if I was to develop a large lot residential in the town, it would be nice to have some kind of picture as to what I might need to do, for example, right? So it can affect everything from the large lots all the way, of course, down to the small lots where maybe I want to put a tiny home in my backyard, for example. Well, from a stormwater perspective, could that actually, so, so I think it affects development throughout our town, and so that's why we, when we're looking at it from the community housing advisory committee, we, of course, we're looking at affordability and is there opportunity to, when we say, wanting to take a building and, you know, say, add a basement suite, for example, which might be affordable, more affordable for some people, you know, then we're looking at parking, extra parking, off street parking stalls, which then, of course, affects stormwater again, right? So it all comes back to block coverage and stormwater. So this is really why we wanted to ask the question.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No. All right, I see you have a motion that has been prepared by your committee. Well, let's see, read it.
I think so. I just, one question for administration, in terms of timeline on this, I'm looking for some kind of reasonable, doable for your workload.
Thanks, council, I appreciate that consideration. I'm not sure what this is going to take, actually. I assume at some point this was rationalized through the development of land use bylaw, but that goes back to 2012 now, and there's probably no one except their planner that's around it, I didn't even put into it. So, we're almost into June already. We were going meeting in July, when in August. I believe the impetus here was to determine whether we could allow expansion on existing lots, increasing the coverage and what impact that's going to have with non-permeable coverage on those properties, right? That's certainly.
There's certainly one aspect, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So I don't really know how long it's going to take, but I would certainly.
Well, if we, if we say or report back to council, you know, it could be an update, I guess, provide further direction of that.
Sure. If you wanted to say an update by the July, or I guess the July is the third week of July meeting, if that works, I'd give some flexibility.
Sure. Okay, so by the, by July, yeah.
By the July council meeting. It may be a simple answer, and maybe already there, it's just finding it.
Did you want to say the administration? Did you want to say the administration? Because that's what they're asking about, administration.
Does that pick up?
Yeah, the word does, is that what you're saying?
Next to the. At the first line. So I have this.
Yes.
Flash superstar.
I'll read the motion. So whereas the current lot coverage ratio may interfere redevelopment's intensification efforts in our town, and whereas housing affordability is an escalating concern that needs to be addressed, be resolved that council directs administration to conduct a comprehensive review of the lot coverage ratios for the town. This should include, should also assess the impacts of lot coverage. This review should also assess the impact lot coverage had on stormwater systems, should be has, on the stormwater systems within our community. This review should be provided back to council by the July 16, 2024 regular meeting of council.
Great. Any questions on the motion? Any questions? Would you like to speak to this anymore?
No.
Um, question? Okay. So council boarder has made this motion, call the question, all those in favor? That's carried. All right, we'll move on to our council reports. I did not provide a written one, but I will give you a verbal update as to some of the things that have been happening. There's a blank here. So since our last council meeting, which was on, it's on the 7th, the following day, I attended the Bill 20 webinar that was put on by Alberta municipalities. And then from there, I went to Edmonton for the Safe and Healthy Communities Committee meeting, that happened on Friday, the 10th. Then last week, we had committee of the whole, and we had intergovernmental relations committee, as well as my meeting with, yeah, we didn't meet last week, I was just trying to remember, meeting with CIO and agenda setting. And so those are the things that I've kind of been up to. Yeah, that's what's going on with me. All right, Debbie Mayer.
Thank you. First, I'd like to just give a big thank you to Mr. Passy for his work as director of corporate services. I really feel the town has benefited from all our work to be put in. I'm sad to see him leave, however, I wish him lots of success in his future endeavors, and I just wanted to extend a thank you. Beyond that, I had the Ourscaser AGM on June 13th, and then will also be present at the high school awards ceremony, I believe, on June 24th. That's about all I got.
Great, thank you. We have everything from council Caldwell, and I think that council Lawrence does have her report in there, so would council boarder.
Thanks, Rob Lattina. I was able to attend the Green Acres Foundation Board retreat on the weekend, which was great to be able to get to know my fellow board members and the foundation in greater detail. I have since been advised that my reports have not, that I've provided previously, were not quite in alignment with the bylaws of the Green Acres Foundation Association, which was, yeah, which was interesting to me.
Your report's here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's, because it's a nonprofit business, what the board appointed by a member of municipalities, the nonprofit is not responsible to report back to municipalities in terms of how they direct, how, at every board meeting, I guess. The report comes in the form of the report that was presented to us at the last meeting, so. Yes, that was an interesting, interesting thing that I learned.
So does that mean that you're unable to share information?
I'm not supposed to, yeah, I'm not supposed to share information unless it's been approved by the board that I can share the information. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's what our, that's what the lawyer team told us. Yeah. So that was, that was, yeah, and I shared, I shared with them that I had shared things. I think most of the things that I had shared were, say, benign with, in terms of the impact to organization. So I didn't think that it was a problem, an issue, but there was, you know, discussion by our legal expert that was there, that, you know, we had a good discussion about this, about how, you know, maybe we could put out, these are the things that you're allowed to share in council meetings, but then it turned, it turned into kind of a debate about, do we want to, does the foundation, did the foundation want to always be reporting back to municipalities in that manner? And so that was, that was kind of the debate that happened at our retreat around that kind of topic, so, yeah. And then community housing advisory committee, I presented for that, our fee, I presented, and then, of course, the other two councils evolved. We did have an MSDA meeting today, and we had the one application come forward, and that was for the large, I heard large, but large for Colormust, I guess, 18 unit housing developed over on the east side by the white line, which went forward. So hopefully, we approved that in a various different way two years ago, so they came back again with a new updated plan, and hopefully this one will see, I guess, hopefully.
Just to clarify, council, it was 21?
21, sorry. It was 18, no, it was. Thank you. That's what I had in mind. Upcoming meetings, there, we have, I've listed there. Yeah, that's all. Any other questions there?
Great, thank you. All right, so we'll continue on here with our agenda. It's a little bit of lighter range today. So we do have two pieces of correspondence. Would anyone like to discuss either of them?
It was 18, no, it was. Thank you. That's what I had in mind. Upcoming meetings, there, we have, I've listed there. Yeah, that's all. Any other questions there?
Great, thank you. All right, so we'll continue on here with our agenda. It's a little bit of lighter range today. So we do have two pieces of correspondence. Would anyone like to discuss either of them?
I had a question on the circular materials, the one. So this presentation, was this just an ongoing update that they're doing kind of regularly?
Every month, they do a report like this, or they have for the last several, and we have to include them all in the council agenda packages. Currently, we have a Mrs. Bird, the transition, with Mr. Passy leaving. He had started the survey in regards to our current situation in terms of tonnage, how we manage certain facets of our recycling program, et cetera. So I'm now having to be tasked with completing that, and I received a couple of emails today in that regard, so I have till Friday to now complete that. And then they're, as you can see in here, they'll be starting to put things forward to municipalities once they have all the information drafted. They were looking for a recent 17th deadline for that, they've extended it to the 24th. So this certainly keeps turning as we go through it. This report actually was a good update for council to let everyone know. You'll see some things they made that are on their schedule that we don't have yet, and that was, that's due to awaiting information from those municipal surveys, which you can imagine was almost serious municipalities that have a lot of work to do in terms of what that looks like on the ground. So this proposition continues to roll along, and I'll be sitting with Kevin in the next day or two to complete that, that survey for them. And, yeah, we'll keep council in the loop in terms of what that looks like.
Any further questions on the events? All right, well, we will adjourn that at 6:54 PM.